With liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
No. Okay. Then we need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Sue, second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye. Thumbs up by Mag. Where's Barb at? Barb say yes? You see Barb on there?
She was on.
Oh, there's.
She's there.
Okay. Barb, you okay? Okay. Thumbs up by Barb. Opposed, motion carried. Item three is our presentations, our audit. Do we have Mary here for that? Is she on? Okay. Go ahead, Mary.
I'm here. Hi, everybody. I'm just going to share my screen so you can take a look at the presentation. Okay, hopefully everyone can see that. So this is the final presentation for the audit for the 2020 school year. And we, myself and Sarah Dayton, who's the partner in charge of the audit, met with the audit committee yesterday through Zoom meeting and presented to them, and they approved the audit. And we have provided for you today electronically final copies of all of the reports, and we'll also be sending paper copies to you within the next day or so. So just taking a look at our our presentation for this year, the deliverables that we are providing to you are our auditor's report on the financial statements, which is an unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion. It's the highest standard that you can receive. The auditor's report required by government auditing standards. There were no matters that we have to report on that. And then the auditor's report on compliance for each major federal program and on internal control required by the uniform guidance. This is an audit that's called a single audit that is required because you receive over $750,000 of federal funds, and you spend over $750,000. So this year you had just shy of 15 million in federal funds compared to 10 million in 2019. And the reason for that increase is that you recognized more federal impact aid in 2020 than you had in 2019. And then you also spent about 7.5 million of those federal funds, impact aid funds in the general fund, and then obviously your federal grants that are in your special aid fund. And then also some of the federal funds were used for your capital project. You are considered a low risk entity because you haven't had any findings in the past two years. And last year we had also tested the impact aid because that is the high, the most federal funds that you get from one program. The data collection form, now that the audit is finalized, will start to work on that. That's a required form that has to be uploaded to the federal clearinghouse, and we'll work with Karen McGarra to, she'll have to certify it as well as us. So now that the audit's been finalized and approved, we'll, we'll move on with that. We also do a report on your extra class activity funds, and we take a look at a few of your clubs. We do have some recommendations regarding those. And you can just see, you started with a cash, you ended with a cash balance of about 54,000. Cash receipts about 112,000, dispersments of about 104, and your starting cash was 46,000. Keeping in mind that extra class activity pretty much ended mid-March, you know, right around the time that the schools had to close for COVID. So there are some balances that are a little bit higher this year than they normally would be, just because there wasn't any end of school year spending for some of these clubs. And then we also have the communication with those charged with governance and management letters, which I'll go through briefly at the end of the presentation. So then the next, the next slide, this is a summary of your fund balances. We have them by fund, general, capital projects, school lunch, and debt service. This just shows the changes in your fund balance year to year. Keeping in mind that the board every year approves a spending policy for your funds, for your reserve funds in the general fund, and also your committed funds. So that is any activity that takes place within those funds is board approved. We saw some minor, pretty minor differences year to year for most of your reserves and your committed funds. The big differences were in the assigned, the designated for next year's budget. That went down a little bit. That's always based on what's in your budget. And then you can see that your unassigned fund balance also went down about 2.4 million. This is actually a function of an almost $13 million transfer that you made to the capital projects fund. When that transfer was made, it shows up as an expense in your general fund. So it, that, that extra expense offset by the net income that you had earned during the year created a decrease in your unassigned fund balance. But you can also see here, the capital projects fund had an increase in your fund balance. In that fund, you spent about $22 million on your two capital projects that you have going. You received the transfer, the almost, about $12 million transfer from the general fund to help fund those projects. Then you also had some bond proceeds, and then you also had some federal and New York state aid. So the difference between the amount spent and then also all of those revenue streams, you ended up with about $200,000 increase in your capital projects fund. School lunch, there was an increase here as well. Given that, you know, the schools had closed down in March, there were some decreases in federally, federal aid that was received, but then you also did have some decreases in your expenses. And then you'll see a new one here, debt service. Through a discussion with management, given the fact that you had some bands and you had a refunding of a bond, we felt that it might be cleaner to have a debt service fund to show those, those activities. So that was created this year, and then has a $4,000 fund balance. Taking a look at your general fund revenue year to year. Big increase here in state aid, as you can see. The, the major reason for that is you received about, close to $9 million in building aid that was transferred over to the capital projects to be used for your capital projects. But it was recorded as revenue in the general fund initially. And you can see that that was really the big increase here to the 31 million versus the 22 million last year and the 22 million the year before. Big jump in federal aid in 2019, and the reason for that is the recognizing of your impact aid. You receive impact aid every year. If you are not using that impact aid within the year that it's received, it sits in unearned revenue on the balance sheet until it is used. So in 2019, you recognize more impact aid and actually transferred that over to the capital projects fund than you did in 2020. So really, it just becomes a timing issue of when you're actually recognizing those revenue sources. Property taxes, it's consistent at, you know, your 251,000. And then other income, there's a decrease in Native American tuition aid that, again, the amount that you're recognizing this year versus what you maybe had recognized in a year before. So again, a lot of that is just timing of when those, that aid comes in from New York State. So overall, you ended up with about a $19 million decrease in revenue, about 30%. But again, a lot of that is just a function of the amount of impact aid that you recognized in 2019. Taking a look at your general fund expenditures, your general fund expenditures went up about 8%. A majority of your expenditures are salaries and employee benefits. They make up about 63% of your total expenditures, 61% in 2019 and 2018. We saw salary increases based on the collective bargaining agreements you have with your employees. We also saw new hires that would increase your payroll by about 1.8 million. You can see the retirement system, health insurance and payroll breakouts here. All of those employee benefits were about $6 million in expenditures this year. Retirement system contributions were a little bit lower than the year before because your TRS rate was 8.6% in 2020 versus 10.6% in 2019. So because of the decrease in the contribution rate, you just had less payments that you had to make. In 2021, the rate will go up to 9.53%, so we will see an increase in that in 2021. Your health insurance went up about 9%, and then also your payroll taxes went up just based on the increase in salaries. Debt service is just a function of the required principal and interest payments that you have to make on your bonds. And you did have a new bond this year, a $7 million bond, and you did refund your 2010 bond. BOSI services, a little bit of an increase there, saw more, more services for students with disabilities, some more computer service instruction services requested, and transportation and other. You did purchase buses this year for about $600,000. However, you did have some cost savings because of the schools being shut down in March. You did realize some cost savings there. So overall, about $3.6 million in general fund expenditures. Again, like I said, about an 8% increase over last year. This is, this next slide is the government wide summary and reconciliation. This is your, your full accrual section of your financial statements. It's the section that includes all of the funds. It also shows all of your liabilities and all of your fixed assets, your capital assets. So taking a look at your current assets, the changes in, in current assets is very often just the timing of when you receive payments and when things are paid, when you receive some of your aid. So we've seen increases in the Native American tuition. We've seen increases in BOSI's aid. We had some receivables there for those. So the current assets are really just more of a function of how your operations are going and timing. Capital assets, as I said, you spent about $23 million on your two capital projects. You actually had three capital projects. One was much smaller, and then you had about $2 million of depreciation. So the net of those is an increase in your capital projects of about $21 million. This pension, OPEB and deferred section is a net of all of your assets and liabilities having to do with your TRS and ERS pension, your other post-employment benefits, and any of the deferred resources that associated with that. When we net those, those lines together, there's about six or seven of them on the balance sheet, you end up with a change of a decrease of about 1.7 million in your asset. And the main driver of that increase is quite a large increase that all the school districts have seen in their net pension liability for the employee retirement system. And a lot of this just has to do with changes in actuarial assumptions and changes in anticipated interest earnings versus actual interest earnings. Those actuarial reports are generated on the state level and shared with all of you, all the school districts, all the municipalities. So this isn't anything that you can change or you have really any say on. This is all has to do with the employee retirement system and the teacher retirement systems. Long-term liabilities, you can see that there was an increase in the liabilities here. As I said, you had a new bond of about $7 million, but then you also had your principal payments, which did decrease the liabilities. So the net was about $5.6 million increase in liabilities. And then other liabilities, when I was speaking earlier about when you're recognizing impact aid and Native, Native American tuition aid, a lot of that has to do with when you're going to be receiving that aid and whether or not you're going to be receiving it within 60 days or 90 days of your year end, or maybe later than that. That has an effect on how things are recorded on the full accrual versus the fund basis. So you have a tendency to see fluctuations in your unearned revenue on a fund basis based on this. And so unearned revenue was about $17 million of impact aid, and it was a smaller amount in the year before. So that's the reason for the increase there. Brings you down to a net position of 128, almost 129 million. This section at the bottom just reconciles between the fund basis and the full accrual basis. So if we take the net income or net loss on a fund basis, which the net loss is this $4.7 million this year, you factor out your capital assets, you factor in your capital assets, factor out your debts. We have the change in unearned versus recorded revenue for the Native American tuition. And then the, the net of your pension, other post-employment benefit liabilities and assets, you get your government-wide net income of about $20 million. Any questions on the numbers before I switch over to the other reports?
Questions? Okay. Go ahead, Mary.
Okay, thanks. This next slide here is basically just a summary of what I just said about the slide before, so you could take a look at that. And then the communication with those charged with governance is one of the required reports. We had no new accounting policies that had to be implemented this year. There are accounting estimates within your financial statements that are pretty consistent estimates every year, collectability of receivable from New York State, capitalization of your and depreciation on your capital assets, your under revenue, compensated absences. Those estimates we highlight every year. Footnote disclosures. The more important footnote disclosures in the financial statements note two is stewardship and compliance. That's the note that points out that you're over the 4% of the 2021 budget. Your unassigned fund balance by law should be 4% or lower of your 2021 budget. Yours is at 28.6%. The year before, it was at about 35%, so it is, it's lower than it was. I will say that with some of the cost savings that the school districts had due to COVID and doing, due to some of the shutdowns, we are seeing more districts with fund balance over 4%. So I think that there's districts that are being cautious about, you know, not necessarily trying to spend because they're unsure what could happen over the next year or two. And then note seven is a summary of your debt and your long-term liabilities. Note eight is about three or four pages of disclosures about your TRS and ERS pension plans. Note nine is another two to three-page note having to do with your other post-employment benefits and the actuarial assumptions associated with that. And then note 12, risks and uncertainties, is just a generic financial statement note that our firm is putting in all of our financial statements, just about COVID and the uncertainty of the impact that it could have on you and your spending and your funding over the, the next couple of years. We didn't have any difficulties encountered in performing the audit. We did have some, some adjusting journal entries that a management has made, and we have disclosed those in this letter. We had no disagreements with management. It does say here that the management representation letter is open. We, we did receive that, receive that today, so that has been taken care of, so there is no more open items. And then no management consultations with other independent accountants and no findings or issues. And then the last is the management letter. No material weaknesses. We did not note anything that, that if it had not been detected or corrected, would have caused your financial statements to be materially misstated. We do have some comments just as a result of our audit. We are disclosing here again about your unassigned fund balance being over the 4% and also to continue to use your reserves in a prudent manner. And then capital assets, we have some recommendations on providing your third-party vendor with some information that had been, some assets that have been added in previous years that aren't on your report currently. And I know we've talked to Karen McGarra about that, and she's going to be working with, and already have started to work with the third-party vendor to correct some of those things. And then we have a few recommendations about student activity funds, just making sure that the student records and the central treasurer's records are reconciled and that they agree, making sure that supporting documentation is included with any cash dispersments or cash receipts. And then also taking a look at inventory at the concession stand and doing a reconciliation of inventory purchased to items sold. Informational points, there's three new government accounting standards that are coming up. Fiduciary activities was supposed to be implemented in 2020, but it was postponed due to COVID. And that takes a look at the items that are in your trust and agency fund, and whether or not they should be recorded in the general fund or another fund. So we'll be implementing that in 2021. The GASB 87 leases was supposed to be implemented in 2021. It's also been postponed due to COVID. And that, we'll take a look at any leases that you have and whether they, and that they should be recorded on the balance sheet as an asset and a liability. And then the last one is GASB 96. This is pretty new. It has to do with subscription-based information technology arrangements. So these are your cloud-based agreements with software companies, and whether or not this, these items should be recorded on the balance sheet as well as an asset and a liability, as a right to use over the terms of the agreement, whether that be five years or however long the agreements might be. As I said, this is pretty new. It just came out over the summer, so we'll be taking a look at that one. But that doesn't have to be implemented until 2023. So that's it for the presentation unless anybody has any questions.
Have any questions? Nope. Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it.
No problem. Thanks. Take care, everybody.
Thank you, Mary.
We have our school opening, or I'm sorry, our reopening instruction by the principals starting out.
What if we start with Mr. Seabird? You want to kick us off?
Certainly. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the chance to update you on the opening and progress for the high school. Currently, we are continuing to do mostly. Overall, the daily attendance has been really good. Through the first three weeks, we've only had a handful of students daily that don't check in. It has been a lot of work for the teachers and other staff to monitor attendance, and they continue to have to go back and monitor previous day's work and engagement to determine if a student was in fact present. We just added a piece last week that should streamline this in which each student is expected to complete a daily COVID screening survey, which would count for their daily attendance. That then enables the teachers to spend more time actually looking at the work being done and developing supports for the students that need it, instead of monitoring and adjusting a period-by-period attendance from three or four days ago. Currently, our e-learning hub has approximately 80 students signed up for track A. That would be Monday and Tuesday, and another 80 on track B, which is Thursday and Friday. Just this week, we opened up the library. It's another hub. This is serving as a hub for our juniors and seniors. And we are also in the process of getting office tables and chairs for the e-learning hub in the gym. These changes will make both locations more suitable and comfortable for learning and engagement. Throughout the course of the day, the students that are in the e-learning hubs get breaks. They go for walks outside with the phys ed teachers, men teachers, students for individual and group help. Our tutoring room is up and operational with tutors, and students are taking advantage of that location and receiving individualized and group help. Each grade level has done a fantastic job monitoring the engagement of students. They've set up a location in teams and other liaison, social workers, guidance counselors. I'll have access to that. The liaison and the social workers and vice counselors have done a fantastic job as far as doing home visits and trying to reach out to those students who are struggling. We do have meetings this week with a couple of more in-depth discussion, intervention and support for those students that are still struggling and not engaging the way we would like them to. Our evening tutoring hours for students are scheduled to begin either later this week or as, or Monday of next week. And overall, it's obviously a difficult time in the world and in education. It is not ideal. But I feel like each day we are progressing and making strides to improve our teaching and learning. I have four partnerships that we've had with Seneca Nation, the teamwork ethic of the entire community. They have shared in to provide the best possible environment and support structures for our students. So overall, it's been a complete team effort and everybody being their part, and I think we're making the work, improving daily, to reach the students and provide an education that's important. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Next.
What if we go with Mrs. Beaver at Seneca Intermediate?
Okay, perfect. Good evening, everyone. So Seneca has approximately 234 students back in person on the hybrid schedule, which is a little over half of our students. We were really excited to bring grades six and seven on Monday. It was a smooth start, knock on wood. I had a chance to get around and finally meet some of the students for the first time. It definitely adds a level of energy to the building, having the kids here. The students are in cohorts by homeroom, so Sheila and Lindy in the office have played a significant role in ensuring the students are getting signed up and returning to school, as well as managing all the other craziness in the office. We're still allowing students to return to school with the hybrid model. So if a student wishes to return, they should reach out to the Seneca office. Again, a big thank you to the transportation and food service departments for their help getting all these kiddos to school and fed daily. All of the teachers are working incredibly hard right now, from our classroom teachers, special area teachers, specialists, interventionists. It has been truly a huge team effort to try and reach all of the students, given these circumstances. circumstances. Having students in person and remote adds a whole new level of teaching, and I must say how proud I am of the work the Seneca teachers are doing. Many of the teachers are using the flipped classroom approach, meaning they have pre-recorded lessons uploaded to the class pages for students with engaging activities to complete after watching the lesson. We have also had some teachers giving live instruction via Zoom with students in the classroom while others are at home, and it seems like we're learning and adapting daily. We have made the decision to continue instruction via class pages to keep consistency and equity across the board. In the event that we need to close schools, we can continue with business as usual because the students are familiar with the class pages and the routine. We've made a commitment to focus on the priority standards for each subject area this year, and we're really focusing on the quality versus the quantity. And the instructional coaches have been available to offer support as needed when it comes to the curriculum and the needs for the teachers. We've also added the Power Hours or the Tutoring for Extra Help Daily, which are after-school hours for each grade level, and this is an opportunity for students and parents to reach out with any questions, and it aligns more closely to a parent or an adult's work schedule. We held a tech support last week from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m., so a huge thank you to Sush Nafner for this. We were able to reach out to some parents that, you know, were still having some technical issues. The first few weeks, we were really focusing on what parents and students needed from us, and we spent a significant amount of time weeding out the tech issues. So again, a big thank you to the tech department. They were very helpful and basically on-demand for us the past several weeks. I think it's safe to say that we have most of the issues resolved, and the students are participating regularly with minimal issues at this point. As a school, we've spent a lot of time focusing on the social-emotional well-being of our students over the past five weeks. We use some social-emotional lessons from a program called Ignite Your Shine, and we used it across grade levels in 4 through 7 to just spread the message of how important each student is to us and that we're here for them and we believe in them. And our service providers, the family liaisons, the student support teams, our counselor, social workers, psychologists, they've all been extremely instrumental in helping to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our students socially and emotionally every day. And I really think overall Seneca is at a really good place right now. Everything is becoming a little more comfortable for everyone. The five-week reports are coming out this week, and we will have some students with some incompletes. The incompletes just mean that a student has some missing assignments for the course, and our hope really is that there's, these reports just, you know, encourage the students to reach out to their teachers to find out how to get caught up on assignments. We're accepting missing work indefinitely, as we know this is a trying time for everyone. So our attendance and participation is improving, but we would like it to get better. We have around 85% participation in Zooms and online material, but still have a lot of students that are just not completing all their assignments. So we're committed to helping the students however we can, and I encourage families to reach out if they're struggling or they're, you know, they need extra support. I've also asked teachers to reach out to families, so we don't want anyone to fall behind. And there is a new daily attendance survey that needs to be completed as an attendance tracker, and there's also a question on this survey that relates to the social-emotional learning of the students. So we're also able to use this as an attendance piece, but also identify students who may need to be reached out to by a counseling staff member. But overall, I think things are going great. I'm really excited to be, you know, a part of the Seneca family, and just a huge thank you to the kiddos and the adults in their lives for all their understanding, flexibility, and support during this time.
Does anybody have any questions?
Actually, I have one quick question. Mrs. Beaver, could you just remind us, what is the policy or practice for late assignments? When can they turn those in?
Indefinitely. Whenever they can get them done. We just, you know, we're only assigning things that we feel are important and valuable to the students, and so if we assign it, we really want them to complete it. So we're working together to ensure that, you know, we can give students whatever support we can to turn in those assignments whenever they can, hopefully sooner rather than later.
I guess that just leaves one left.
All right, Ms. Pavone, you're up.
So far, we've had an excellent year at Prospect. We're up to 110 students on Mondays and Tuesdays in our hybrid model and 130 on Thursday and Fridays. So we are up to 55% of our student population in person. We did transitional days, which really, I think, supported our students in making that adjustment. For our students that are on e-learning, they do come to homeroom huddle on a daily basis so that we can make sure they're doing okay. Our homeroom huddle really is just a social-emotional check-in with every student. There's not anything academic tied to that time, but that is when we are taking our daily attendance, and it really gives us that face time with our kids and gives us just that personal connection that we need in order to be successful within ELA and Math. We have provided families with different options for e-learning times, just to try to meet family schedules as best as possible. And we also started the Power Hour in the evening for every single grade level. So if a student misses ELA or Math during the day, they can jump on in the evening and get the credit for ELA and Math. We also have begun our guided reading lessons, so students are coming into their small groups, either in person or via Zoom. We do, we are continuing our Technology Wednesdays from 1:00 to 3:00. Parents are able to sign up for a time to come into the office and get supported in accessing all the class pages and anything necessary to help support their child. We started a new dismissal process that is working well. We're able to get students loaded right into their cars, since we couldn't have any large gatherings in the gym any longer. Students are really following a great routine when they come into the building. We've made sure that we are doing recess on a daily basis, and the teachers are doing a great job of getting the kids outdoors when possible, just to get that extra stretch break, being able to spread out 12 feet apart and take their masks off and really get some fresh air. Our e-learning students are also getting breaks between their Zooms in order to get up and about and move, because we know that that movement piece is critical. The staff at Prospect is doing an incredible job of working as a team to support all of our learners. Our social workers and guidance counselor have been working hard to make sure we're engaging all families. We've had to do a few home visits to get a few of the families connected better and helping out, and that's been a wonderful support, and we're going to continue to do that. We also have our Building Strong Warrior videos online within class pages as well as specials so that those activities can be continued, even though they can't occur in person in school yet. Ellie and Barb have been doing a phenomenal job as we've continued to get a lot of changes between hybrid and e-learning, and it is a domino effect, but we're excited that we're getting more and more students within the building. And the transportation department has been great at being flexible with those changes, and it's been good to have Mr. Long's support in making sure that all those changes are happening and that we aren't having any hiccups within the line of communication between all the changes occurring. So it was, it's great to see the kids in person, but it's also been great to see all the kids via Zoom too. I've enjoyed popping in and just seeing how engaged the students are, whether they're in the classroom or on Zoom. So thank you for everything and all the support from all the families to help us be successful this year.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you to all the principals for the presentations. It was really great to hear how we're handling and trying to get students back. I think it's, I know for me, since I don't have anyone going to school right now, it's really great to hear how you guys are implementing and trying to engage the students. Okay, next, we have our school safety reopening presentation.
All right. Terrific. Thank you. Much of the educational components have been covered by our building principals, but I would like to take a moment to give a quick update as far as where we are with several of the safety factors. So our current status, as we heard, is Prospect and Seneca are primarily hybrid instruction. We have about 55% of students who are onsite at least two days a week. More students are transitioning to hybrid from e-learning, and what we've done is, in order to be able to manage that change, we've scheduled those to sort of come in on waves. So Mondays are the days that we start the students who are transitioning primarily from the e-learning into the hybrid section. That allows our transportation and food service to be prepared, as well as all of the other behind-the-scenes logistics that need to happen. The high school is still primarily e-learning with more and more people coming or students coming onto the campus. As Mr. Seibert mentioned, there is a bit of a difference between attendance and participation. I'll talk about that a little bit later, but when we talk about attendance, that is, you know, students at this point in time usually filling out the initial COVID assessment in the morning, and that's how we get school attendance. In other words, that we know a student is here on that particular day. There's also participation, and participation means that the student is engaged in the learning in one way or another. Now, a student may not need to attend a class, let's say, a social studies class on Monday and Tuesday. On Tuesday, they may do all of the work that was done on Monday and Tuesday. So if they participate appropriately and do essentially what they're required to do to be successful, the student would get attendance credit for Monday and Tuesday. So that's a change from New York State that has also led to a little bit of confusion about class attendance, so in other words, period-by-period attendance, and then attendance for the day. And that has pretty much been hammered out, but I do want to acknowledge that there has been some confusion over that as we sort of learn and progress through our new understanding of what attendance and participation is. I do want to touch briefly on some of our future plans. Prospect and Seneca are both evaluating a four-day-a-week option, so that would be students coming onto campus for four out of the five days a week. Now, in order for that to happen, the grown-ups and the students will need to either commit to a hybrid or e-learning model. The reason we need to do that is because we're approaching maximum capacity, meaning the largest number of students that we can have on campus. So we need to start communicating with our, the grown-ups and saying, you know, at this point in time, there needs to be a pretty solid commitment for the next several weeks that you're either going to be on the hybrid or the e-learning system. That way, we can plan and fill in all of the available spots so that we can reach our maximum capacity onsite. Our high school students are currently using an e-learning and learning hub model. There have been requests to bring in more students and to have those sort of cohorts have greater teacher contact, and I anticipate that that will begin to occur over the next several weeks, as Mr. Seibert mentioned. I do want to address our ongoing monitoring of COVID in the region. We monitor the situation on a daily basis and even throughout the day. I just want to remind us that we have several options should something arise, and that's moving to 100% e-learning with students and teachers working remotely. We also have 100% e-learning with students working remotely and teachers working onsite. And we remind our students and teachers that this is, we need to be prepared to make those changes on a day-by-day basis. We have seen a lot of things happening really on the east half of the county, particularly in and around Ole'An. We see that Ole'An General Hospital no longer is permitting visitors because the numbers are increasing there. I just want to assure folks that we monitor that and are prepared that if we determine, along with the assistance of the New York State Department of Health and Cat County Department of Health, that we should close out of precaution, out of an abundance of precaution, or in the event that we do have a potential or confirmed case, that that will happen literally in less than 24 hours' notice, so everyone needs to be prepared for us to make that switch. We do, as I mentioned, work with the Cat County Department of Health on a daily basis. We do report to the New York State Department of Health a whole host of information, including the number of students that are referred to testing, the number of staff members that are referred to testing. If we have any positive cases, we work with the county and those are confirmed. So there is an awful lot of work that occurs behind the scenes to ensure that our students are safe, and once again, I'm just going to state what we said throughout July and August, that we will open and keep our schools only, open only if we determine that it is safe to do so. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
Dr. Beeler, can you just talk about the new committee that's being formed?
Really, I would love to. This evening before the Board of Education is a committee that will be not overseen by administrators, and I want to make that clear, that this is a teacher, community member, and board-driven committee, the purpose of which is to assess our current status educationally. While I know, and we get very good feedback, that we're doing a great job, and you heard the good work that the principals and teachers and all of our staff are doing, we believe that there are some areas that probably need to be improved upon, and we have had that commitment to improvement for years. So that committee will work with members of the community, with students, with teachers, to identify what those areas are that we can improve upon, make recommendations if they feel comfortable doing so, or at the very least, provide feedback so that our teachers and our administrators can be more responsive, so that we can better meet the needs of our students, as well as the grown-ups in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beeler.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to communications. Do we have anyone from Title VI? Nancy, do you have anything for Title VI? Okay, then let's move on to our central office message. Karen, let's start with you.
Two things. First, just a reminder for the parents that I know it's after the fact now, but just remember if you've ordered the weekly lunches to pick them up on Mondays. Drew said that we had 69 food boxes that were returned on Monday from people that didn't pick them up, so that leads to a waste of food for the district. And then, secondly, Mr. John had asked me about cameras on the buses for those who pass the bus when the red lights are on. We do have them on the buses. They are located on the front of the buses, not on the actual stop arms. And what happens now is if anybody does that, Bus Garage works with Officer Dombeck from the Sheriff's Department, our SRO, and he'll have tickets issued after reviewing the videos and so forth. So far this year, we haven't had any. Last year, they did take care of several of them. That's all I have.
Does anyone have any questions for Karen?
We should be publicizing this kind of thing, that we are going to press charges if anything happens and find them, so people will have a heads-up on, we're really going to get stricter about this.
Bye, and Vinny and get something out.
Anyone else? Okay, Dr. Beeler, you have anything else?
Actually, thank you, Mrs. Ray. I do want to acknowledge all of the hard work that our administrators are doing and our teachers and our staff. We heard this evening that an awful lot of work is going on behind the scenes to ensure that we have a successful situation for our students as much as possible. I specifically would like to acknowledge the work that the technology department has done and the hard work of our instructional coaches, who are moving forward with a lot of our district initiatives in an exceptionally challenging time. Communication is an area that we consistently focus on in the best of circumstances, and now that is made even more challenging when we cannot get groups of people together to hear the same message. hear the same message. So over-communicating is really our goal, and our instructional coaches really do a great job of being sort of a conduit of information to our teachers. This morning, I had the chance to attend a virtual conference with the Deputy Commissioner of Education, as well as the interim Commissioner of Education. So some of the information that I have to share is relatively new. A study was done, and of all of the school districts throughout New York State, only 55% or so responded. We did respond, just so that we're on the same page there. And that was focused on what type of instruction is happening across the state, as well as the access that students and teachers have to the internet as well as devices. So some of these numbers are kind of interesting. We seem to sort of fall in with the norm, so to speak. A little more than 61% of school districts throughout the state are providing primarily hybrid education. 23% are 100% remote, and only 16% are full face-to-face instruction. The struggles that we have experienced and, for the most part, have overcome with the digital inequity are prevalent across all of New York State. There are some surprising numbers. Greater than 350,000 students do not have devices that they have access to. And remember, this is only 55% of the student, or of the schools actually responding. So the number is likely much higher than that. And there were even more students who didn't have internet access at home, which renders some of those devices nowhere near as productive as they could be. In those cases, and in most cases, cost was the obstacle for internet. For us here, it's simply the access and cellular coverage. We're happy to cover whatever that cost would be through our programs, but throughout the rest of the state, the cost seems to be an obstacle. Interestingly, there were also 42,000, actually over 42,000 teachers who do not have access to a device or internet after hours or after being out of school. So one thing that we're fortunate is that all of our teachers and all of our students have access to a portable device that can be taken home on a daily basis. The Regents in three through eight testing has to occur in person. So there will be a decision coming about in October, so this month, as to whether or not those tests are going to continue in the spring. The Regents' decision is going to come up sooner because right now, we anticipate or don't have anything to indicate that January Regents' exams are off. So since those have to occur face-to-face, in order for there to be equity in the assessments, it's highly likely, I'll hedge the bet here and say that those are not going to occur this January, but a formal decision will be coming out in October for both the Regents' exams and the three-through-eight testing. I do just want to acknowledge that, starting in the next week or so, we are moving forward with a new assessment across the district, the NWEA. It's a national assessment, so that we have consistent benchmarks that will be offered three times throughout the school year for our students in math, ELA, and science. More information will be forthcoming on that for our parents. So this provides us with a consistent benchmark that we can use and help our teachers and administrators with planning instruction, tracking skills mastery, and then monitoring progress. We have always taken the three-through-eight assessments, and we know that that's a one-time snapshot. This transition to NWEA actually started well before the pandemic, about a year ago, so that we meet some of the requirements for screening tools, but also so that we have an internal mechanism to assess progress. Another change that has come about, and that's a unit of study. So that's essentially a credit for students, so that they get, we've heard course credit, meaning they have to be traditionally in seat a certain number of minutes. Well, the Department of Education has redefined a unit of study as not simply number of minutes in a classroom, but also includes participation in online and asynchronous, so not in real-time activities. That was essential for us in the case of the pandemic right now, because we don't have students in seat for a certain number of minutes every day or every week. But what's significant here is that the commissioner has indicated that those changes are going to stay post-pandemic. So that opens up the door to a wide range of options moving forward for students with what school can look like. It's no longer you need to have 1,800 minutes or thousands of minutes in a seat in a classroom. You can actually complete work and show participation in a wide range of ways and now get course credit. One piece of very good news, which due to the hard work of Mr. Aaron Strauss and Mr. Justin Shepp, Salamanca High School is one of the newest additions to ACES. That's the American Indian Science and Engineering Society. That's a national organization that's committed to high school, college, and professionals to promote high standards for education and professional excellence, and to increase the STEM workforce specifically for Native Americans. That came about, again, from the work of Mr. Shepp and Mr. Strauss, and it's just one more option and opportunity that we have for our students in high school. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mark? Okay, then we'll go on to the Board of Education message. Let's start with Meg to see if her microphone's really working.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So just really quick, just want to say what I've been saying for the past couple of meetings, just a thank you to teachers, parents, and grownups and administrators, you know, getting through COVID. Gail was nice enough to give me a tour of Prospect a couple of weeks ago, or maybe a week and a half ago. I don't know, my sense of time is off now, but to look at the hybrid learners at Prospect. And I was just really impressed with everyone in the building, you know, from the kiddos to, you know, teachers, teaching assistants, everyone, just very professional. There were lots of smiles on people's faces. It, you know, everything seemed to be operating very well, masks on everyone. The kids seemed to be having a lot of fun. I saw kids on the playground at recess, so it's really approaching, I think, as much of a normalcy as we possibly can, you know, during this time. And I was just really impressed with everyone there, so thank you to that. I'd love to peek in at the other campuses too, you know, at some point, because I just think it's nice to hear about it at the board meeting, but to see it in person, you know, gives a whole new level of understanding. So again, thank you to everyone for that.
Let's go to Barb. So I don't forget anyone. We can, thank you.
Okay, good. I just also want to thank everybody for all their extra effort and meetings to keep school going, and I'm sure that all the parents and community members appreciate it. I can imagine how hard it must be, but thank you so much, and that's all I have.
Sue?
One, well, like the other two, I can't thank the teachers and the administration and all of the other people who work in this building and Prospect as well, helping our children and helping them through this. It's got to be kind of scary for the younger children to understand what's going on. And I think our teachers and the workers are doing a wonderful job, and we really do appreciate you. Thank you.
Brad?
I'd also just like to say thank you to everyone for their extra efforts during this time, and also encourage the community, if you are struggling, to work under the current conditions, just to reach out to the administrators. I know there are some people out there, and it seems like everybody's willing to help everyone's situation, so I just want to encourage them to reach out.
And Carrie?
Good evening, everyone. I'll take a turn. I'll go to the sports. Sports are back. People are excited. My house is excited. My girls are playing soccer, you know. We've kind of been anxiously awaiting the return of sports for months. It seems like it's a little bit of normalcy coming back. You know, our lives are starting to come back to normal. I don't know, I don't know why, but it just seems like going to a game all of a sudden for me is normal. You know, it's weird. But along that lines, I asked for a brief little tour over at our Vets Park before the board meeting, and I have to say, 247,000 square feet of turf is huge. Walking from end to end, just taking a look at it, you just don't get the sense of enormity until you're actually over there. It is awesome what's going on over there. I want to thank our entire community for supporting this project. Standing at home base on the baseball field and looking all the way back across, it seemed like it was a mile-long stretch. You know, it's a different feel, and I just can't wait for spring. And when we look at, you know, opening this whole entire, you know, beautiful new Vets Park, and I was already just, you know, I already have visions that we're going to have football, we're going to have baseball, we're going to have lacrosse, all going on this spring. I just have visions of a triple header grand opening, you know? It's exciting, it really is. But not to diminish everything else that our educators are doing. Everyone's doing a tremendous job, and whatever you're doing, whether it's enough, not too much, whatever doubts you have, everybody's doing a great job. We've never been here before, none of us. And if anyone would have asked last year what we were doing this time, nobody would have ever predicted this. So I do want to thank everybody who's working so hard to try to get our kids the best education possible. And with that, I'll turn it over.
Yeah, it's like a broken record here. I'd like to say thanks to everybody in the community, you know, for helping out our students. It is a difficult time, you know, in education, you know, statewide, and what everybody's doing, you know, from administration on down to the cleaners, you guys have been doing a spectacular job. Please, please continue to do so for our students. The cold and flu season is sneaking up on us pretty quickly here, so, and a lot of the symptoms of the COVID are very similar to what, to what the cold and flu are. So please, take care of yourself, and more importantly, take care of each other. Thank you.
Teresa?
Yes.
Can I just say one more thing?
No, yes, you can. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Carrie jogged my memory with the sports. I don't know how I forgot this, but I was beyond thrilled to see all of the retweets and reposts of our box lacrosse fields going up. I mean, thrilled is an understatement. The National Lacrosse League retweeted the posts that included Levi's pictures, the drone shots of our box lacrosse fields, and that's just amazing. I mean, for anyone that's not immersed in lacrosse, like a lot of us are, you just, that's like the NFL reposting something, you know, from our school district. So it's just, it's amazing what we're doing academically and in terms of athletics.
I'd just like to also say thank you to everybody that's helping our kids get through this. I know the teachers, the administrators, the cleaners, the bus drivers, everybody's working overtime to help make sure everybody is successful. And I want to give a shout out too to the parents, because they're really putting in a lot of extra hours to try and make sure that their kids are successful. And like everybody here has said, if you need help, please don't be afraid to reach out and ask somebody if your kid is struggling, if you're worried about assignments, if you're worried about technology, and you don't think you have the connection, you know, reach out to the school. I think we have what, MiFi that we can help give out. So we're here to help. Everybody's here to help, and again, it's that community working together to make sure that our kids are as successful as can be. So thank you to everyone. And I agree that sports coming back is a nice little bright spot that does bring a smile to our faces. I got a text earlier about the swim meet being livestreamed, so I think that's exciting too, even though our parents can't be in the auditorium, but they can at least watch it. So thank you to everybody that's helped making that possible. I'm going to turn it over to Bob, because I know he's probably patiently waiting there.
That's right. I have a, quite a few things to say. First, you know, I just, I'm reminded, I think a couple of folks had like a broken record. We have to remember that our students don't necessarily know what records are anymore, so maybe it's more like a cracked phone screen. But I have a lot of positive things to say, and I'll start with thanking our principals and our teachers and our support staff. Mark mentioned our IT staff and our transportation and our food service staff. There are a lot of people behind the scenes that make this possible, and when we look and see what's happening across New York State, across our region, I think we have a lot to be proud of. And so I think every opportunity we can to celebrate our successes, and as Dr. Beeler noted, acknowledge that just simply being successful is not good enough for us. We want to be excellent across the board and everything, and strive for perfection in communication, instruction, and responding to things that, as Carrie said, a year ago, we didn't even imagine were even feasible or possible, even in our wildest, worst nightmares. And we're living it and doing it quite well. So I'm going to start by addressing a few issues that I don't think most people would know. Last week, on a moment's notice, we found out that a number of our special ed students' programs were going all virtual, and as Mark had said, in an instant, and it's almost as if we're on full Blizzard mode in a traditional winter where we at least have a little bit of a notice of a pending weather storm. This isn't what we're dealing with in our reality at this point in time. Things are going to change in a heartbeat, and change again, and change again, and the key has to be over-communicating and flexibility. And I do want to thank our pupil service staff, particularly Mrs. Dudek and Mr. Parisi, and our transportation staff and our IT staff for making sure that our special ed students that were at this site, which was going virtual in a second, that we made sure that we had what we need for those kids. That's something to be proud of, that we will take whatever is thrown at us, we'll catch our breath, and we have a plan in place. So I want to thank those staff members. I also want to acknowledge our clerical staff, who are working like crazy and juggling 87 different balls at once to help the principals, but also to help the teachers, and especially to help the other support staff, like our nurses, and especially our students. So everyone is doing great. The past two Wednesdays, last week and the week before, we provided lunch, and we're looking at scheduling another Wednesday lunch for our staff on both campuses. I do want to thank our new Warrior staff, who are joining our team and our family tonight. When we get to personnel, the principals are going to introduce four teacher assistants and a long-term sub for the library, so congratulations to our newest Warriors. We're glad you're joining our team, and we are looking forward to you starting. On a personal note, I do want to thank especially Teresa and the board members tonight, and Mark and Karen, for letting me Zoom tonight. I had some family medical issues with my mother-in-law, and knowing that I have the support of my colleagues that I work with every day and the board members to tend to some pretty significant life issues with my mother-in-law, it just makes things better. So from the bottom of my heart and my family's heart, thank you very much. Moving on to something personal and also very enjoyable, last week and the week before, we were in full force in Washington DC, at least virtually, lobbying for Impact Aid. I do want to thank Justin Shepp for helping to facilitate some of those meetings and for participating in those meetings, as well as a number of other superintendents and school districts across the region for joining us on some calls with Senator Schumer and Gillibrand, Congressman Brindisi, Higgins, Tom Reed, and a few other personnel that we were meeting with. It's important that we continue our lobbying efforts, particularly at this point in time when there is nothing but strife and logjam in Washington, because if we don't carry that banner and we don't advocate for our students, no one else will. And because of those efforts last week, the House and the Senate did pass a continuing resolution, which might not seem like much, and seems like standard Washington affair, but it actually was significant for districts like Salamanca and Impact Aid. First, it allows us to be held harmless with our student counts, and it can be a challenge during COVID to make sure that we have accurate student counts. So this is a good thing from a student count perspective, that we will, at least as a minimum, be where we were last year with our student counts. It also is important, because there's additional funding that's coming along with this continuing resolution for Impact Aid districts. How much, we're not entirely certain, but it is a positive step. There is bipartisan- There is bipartisan support, uh, on both the House and the, uh, Senate side for coronavirus impact aid relief bill. Unlike the large stimulus package for impact aid, uh, for, excuse me, for COVID relief. This is a little bit more, uh, central and localized, and it does have support from both the House Republicans and Democrats and the Senate Democrats and Republican, which is not always something that happens in DC particularly of late. Um, one of the issues that I do want to bring to the board's attention that also has bipartisan support that we're actively pushing is, um, something that deals with, uh, impact aid construction. And just a very brief statement is there is the BIA Bureau of Indian Affairs Funding Stream, which funds 183, uh, Indian, uh, affiliated school districts, indigenous districts across the country, 183, uh, specifically for construction. And that equates to over the last nine years, uh, approximately $900 million for 183 school district. So the math for construction is pretty good if you're a BIA school. However, on the other side of the ledger are over 600 national Indian impacted school associations of which they are not included in the 183 Bureau, uh, count. Over that same nine-year period, those 600 districts plus have split approximately $155 million. A significant discrepancy for serving the same population of students. So we've advocated and there's bipartisan support in the House and the Senate to provide an equalization for that. Those are the types of things that don't make the front page of the newspaper, take a lot of time to coordinate, but produce meaningful benefits for students in Salamanca and on the other side of the territory for the other three school districts affiliated with the Seneca Nation and some 600 plus districts across the country that serve indigenous children. We need to use our leverage as a leader and steam and instruction and graduation rates and, uh, innovation in our academics to tell not just our story, but the story that could be possible for thousands upon thousands of indigenous students that are attending schools like Salamanca all across the country. I do want to thank Mr. Shep for helping. Um, he is quite talented at twisting arms and getting those meetings, uh, scheduled. So we are very happy to leverage his past experiences and to have a platform to continue those conversations. I do want to also thank, uh, Mickey Deppen. Mickey is on the agenda, uh, in our personnel section. Mickey is retiring after nearly 30 years of service to Salamanca. She first began as a substitute teacher aide and then eventually became a teacher assistant and has spent a long time helping us, uh, within our computer and our technology programs, particularly at the intermediate school. Um, Mickey is just a wonderful, amazing person. Uh, she's kind, she's hardworking, she's collegial with everyone, has a kind word for everyone and a pat on the back and is very patient with adults who, and students that may need some TLC with the computers or just anything in general. Uh, we wish Mickey all of the best as she moves on to the next chapter in, uh, her life and retirement with her, uh, family and extended family and friends. And just from the bottom of my heart, I just want to thank Mickey, uh, for, uh, nearly 30 years of exemplary service to the district. She'll be difficult to replace, but we are, uh, happy for her that she's healthy and she's able to spend some more time with her family. And then one last thing, I think that's it. Um, I do want to thank, um, the Board of Education, uh, Dr. Beeler, Mrs. McGarra and our associations. Um, our Teachers Association, uh, Lacey Pillblad and Tony Butcharsky, our administrators. Mrs. Dudek, Ms. Pavone, our civil service associations. Uh, Dan Lear and Carrie Letson for SSSO, as well as Kristen Emily and Lori Miller for CSU, as well as our confidential managerial staff. We've been dealing with a number of COVID-related labor issues that there is no playbook, there is no recipe, there is no blueprint. Um, I, I don't want to give the impression that we're making it up as we go along with some of these labor issues that we've never ever even had to contemplate. But together we are solving problems that didn't exist for five months ago, six months ago. And it's because of that collegial relationship, it's because of that willingness to have conversations. And it's our willingness to put our heads together and come up with perhaps a temporary solution, but to keep moving the ball ahead so that our focus can resolutely remain on wellness, instruction and safety. And I think that's what makes Salamanca, Salamanca. So thank you, everyone. Thank you to the board. Thank you to all of our staff. Um, whatever your title is, uh, we love you and we depend upon you each and every day. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Ray.
Thanks, Bob. Does anyone have any questions for Bob? Okay, then we're going to move on to the consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Dale. Second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye. Uh, thumbs up by Mag. How about Barb? I can't tell. I think that's a thumbs up. Opposed? Motion carried. We have no old. We have no old business, so when we move on to new business. Uh, item A is our Erie One BOSI's creating healthy schools and community MOU. So we need a motion to approve that MOU. Motion by Sue. Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye. Thumbs up by Mag. Barb's given a thumbs up. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. And item, item B is our Gene Pescarella Scholarship and Nelson, um, Beard Memorial Scholarship. So we need, uh, a motion to approve both those scholarships. Motion by, I think Brad first, you second Sue. Motion by Brad, second by Sue. Are there any questions on the scholarships? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Thumbs up by Mag. Thumbs up by Barb. It's hard to see you, Barb. I'm assuming that's a yes. I. Okay. So we got a thumbs up by Barb. Opposed? Motion carried. Item C is our surplus. We need a motion to approve the surplus items listed above. Motion by Carrie. Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye. Thumbs up by Mag. Barb? I cannot tell. Can we unmute Barb so we know if it's a yes or no? Barb, is that a yes? Okay.
Yes.
Yes for Barb. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. Item D is to create position, uh, one full-time teacher assistant. So we need a motion to approve the creation of that position. Motion by Brad, second by Carrie. Are there any questions?
Um, Teresa, I just put a note in the board docs that this was budgeted for, but, uh, not filled because we weren't sure if the student was going to be remote or hybrid and they will be returning in person.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Yep.
So we have a motion by Brad, second by Carrie. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye from Barb, thumbs up from Mag. Opposed? Motion carried. And item E is, uh, creation of the District Health and Wellness Safety Committee Subcommittee. So we need a, a motion to approve that Subcommittee. Motion by Sue. Second by Dale. Are there any questions?
Uh, Mark, can you give us a little bit of description or background on this?
So the purpose of this committee is to be an official group, um, under the Board of Education and it fit most likely under our existing, um, Wellness and Safety Committee, given that it will deal with safety, um, as well as education. Um, the intent is for them to provide both short-term and long-term feedback regarding our current education plan primarily, but also the safety measures that we're taking and putting in place to ensure that our, our students and staff are safe. We have identified that several, sometimes community members, students, um, and the grownups are not, um, likely to come forward to administrators. Um, we see that many times on social media. So the intent here is to have a non-administrator run group, um, to gather feedback, um, so that people feel more comfortable. And that can be feedback from teachers, from community members, from the grownups, from the students, um, and then provide that feedback to us in a friendly and courteous and safe, is probably the most important word, safe manner, so that we can continue to make improvements, um, and adjustments moving forward. Um, I've asked Mr. Bartoszak to sort of head that up. He's a community member, well-respected, a parent, um, coach and really runs the gamut. So, um, many people know him, know that he's an upstanding, um, and generally great, nice guy. Um, and, uh, so he will be heading this group up. Um, we have already sort of touched base, base with some parents who have expressed interest as well as some educators. So, um, at, once again, the intent is to provide a safe environment to gather feedback. Um, and our goal is simply to take that feedback and simply improve what we're doing here for the betterment of our students.
Any other questions? So we have a motion by Sue, second by Dale. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thumbs up by Mag. Opposed? Motion carried. Then item F is our MOAs for our, uh, CSU, CM, SSSO, PIS, SASSA, uh, and the superintendent and deputy superintendent, and Salamica Teachers Association MOA. So we need a motion to. Yeah, it's, it's in here. Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Covers all, all employees.
Covers every employee.
That would have been easier, sorry.
It would have, probably would have been a little bit easier. So we need a motion to approve the MOAs. Motion by Carrie. Who's second that? Dale? Brad. Okay, second by Brad. Are there any questions on any of these MOAs? Okay, then we got a motion by Carrie, second by Brad. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
A po-, um, thumbs up by Mag. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. And item G is our Salamica Teacher Association Memorandum of Settlement. So we need a motion to approve that settlement agreement. Motion by Dale. Second by Sue. Are there any questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thumbs up by Mag. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. Item H, our University of Cumberland MOU. Need a motion to approve that MOU? Motion by Carrie. Second by Brad. Are there any questions?
Uh, just a quick note, um, this is a new, uh, memorandum of agreement with a new university, but this impacts a former Salamica student who's looking to do student teaching, uh, back with us.
Oh, perfect. Thank you, Bob. So we have a motion by Carrie, second by Brad. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mag gives a thumbs up. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. Item I is our Hadley Exhibits Incorporated Agreement. So we need a motion to approve that agreement. Motion by Carrie. Second by Dale. Are there any questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thumbs up by Mag. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. And my favorite, uh, item J, Capital Project Change Orders, Allowance and Disbursements. So we need a motion to approve the change orders and allowance dispersments that are listed above. Motion by Brad. Sec-, second by Dale. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question. Why was this your favorite, Teresa?
That's all. You know how much I love it, Carrie, when we have to pay for extra things that aren't included. Yeah, that's what we keep saying. So we got a motion by Brad, second by Dale. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thumbs up by Mag. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. Item K is our Salamica High School 2021 Student Handbook, uh, Code of Conduct. So we need a motion to approve the handbook and code of conduct. Motion by Dale. Second by Sue. Are there any questions on either of these items?
I got a question.
Okay.
Um, I think it was page seven on the, the presentation. It just lists, uh, symptoms. I'm just curious where we got this list of symptoms because it isn't consistent with the CDC list of symptoms.
Uh, let's see. So, one, I was going to ask Mrs. McGarra to, that Lynn McGarra, to sort of give an update on this, but I do believe that that list, um, was probably current in May or June, um, when this went to publication. Uh, so if that may be part of the, uh, difference, but, um, if Mrs. McGarra is available to answer, she might be able to provide a better answer.
Curious because a couple of these I've never seen on the list.
Maybe we're just ahead of things.
Means this virus is getting worse.
No, Mrs. McGarra?
I don't think Mrs. McGarra's there. Mr. Sebert, do you have, uh?
I don't have page seven in front of me, so I'm not sure what the symptoms you're talking about are.
Uh, fever, dry cough, tiredness. Then it goes into less common symptoms include aches and pains, nasal congestion, headache, conjunctivitis, sore throat, diarrhea, loss of taste or smell, a rash on skin and discoloration of fingers or toes. Uh, very inconsistent with what the CDC has for their latest guidelines.
So I guess what I can say is we can look into that and if we need to make, uh, changes in that, we will.
Well, I think we need to because I don't think we want to put out the wrong message. Especially Dale mentioned earlier that we're coming into cold and flu season. We have a lot of different symptoms and there's going to be a lot of different signs and we're going to be dealing with a lot of different issues. So when we look at this, we want to put out a consistent message that's accurate with, with our national leaders and health are telling us. So I don't think this needs to be published. Um.
One of the things. Sure. One of the things that we do look at is, I mean, we don't look at single symptoms as a standalone. I mean, typically we're looking at multiple symptoms.
Well, you have to look at single symptoms as a standalone because any one of them could be COVID.
Correct. If it's something that is a new symptom to you, I mean, if you typically wake up with, you know, allergies or runny noses, then, you know, that is not necessarily a symptom.
Well, runny noses is actually on the CDC list. Now, something like itchy, itchy watery eyes has never been on the list. So if you have itchy watery eyes, that could be associated with an allergy or something else, but it's not COVID.
Um, what I would suggest is, uh, let's pull it from the agenda, let's clarify it and then make sure we have the information. Cause this will go up on the website too. Uh, and then we can provide an update and make sure that it's correct.
Okay.
Bob.
Then, uh, can we withdraw that current motion? Okay. And then can we have a motion to table? Motion by Dale, second by Sue to table until the next meeting. Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thumbs up by Mag. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. Thumbs up by Meg. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. And item L is our MOA with Cat Littlevally and SCCSD Boy Sucker. So we need a motion to approve that MOA. Motion by Brad, second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thumbs up by Meg. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. Item M is our acceptance of our fiscal year June thirty, twenty twenty audit. So we need a motion to approve the audit and the corrective action plan. Motion by Sue, second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thumbs up by Meg. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. Item eight is our Personnel Consent Agenda, which is quite lengthy. And we need an approval for the Personnel Consent Agenda. Motion by Dale. Second by Brad. Are there any questions on any of the items? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thumbs up by Meg. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. And now we have some introductions.
We can start with, how about Ms. Pavone with the Prospect TAs?
Great. I'm excited to have multiple TAs on the docket tonight, and multiple of them are at the meeting. I'm going to start with Deanna Jimmerson. Deanna is a Salamaca graduate who has been subbing at the Prospect Building quite a bit last year up through March, and then has also subbed a couple of times this year. She was actually in subbing in the building today. She has a great background to bring to our students on someone that has followed her passion and dreams and continued on and has come back to the local area. She has children in the building, and she'll be a great addition to our staff. So I'm very excited to have her on board as one of the teaching assistants. We also have Amy Maury. Amy was also a substitute within the building and is going to also pursue completing her teacher assistant certification. She has a great background to also bring to our students that is outside of the realm of education, but has a passion for helping our kids grow. During her substitute experience, she actually experienced the evacuation drill and was able to get a bunch of first graders that she didn't work with on a daily basis out of the building safely and was able to keep them calm. So I'm very excited to have her as part of our team. And then we also have Sarah Aldrick, who will be coming on board. And Sarah has worked in multiple different offices and buildings, and we're excited to have her come to work with our students also.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of them.
We have one introduction, Mrs. Ray, from Mrs. Bieber at Seneca Intermediate.
I would like to introduce Loretta Ward. She'll be joining Seneca as a teaching assistant. She has a variety of experiences working with children. She brings with her great passion and commitment and dedication, and we are very excited to have her join our team.
Thank you.
And lastly, Mr. Seibert at the high school?
Well, I'm pleased to introduce Alicia McLoughlin as a long-term library media specialist substitute. Alicia has currently been working with JCC Liberty Partnership, and we are happy to kind of steal her to Salamanca. She, she has built some fantastic relationships with the students that she works with. She's grown the Liberty Partnership Program where she is able to offer tutoring and career awareness and college awareness activities, take students on field trips. And honestly, is just, just a super-nice woman that has built phenomenal relationships with a lot of our students. And we look forward to having her continue to do that in the library, and we're just really excited to have her with us. She's kind of been with us for the last, I don't know, four or five years, I think. So she, she already has a great relationship with a lot of the students and staff.
Congratulations. Congratulations to all the new additions and to the retiree, Ms. Steppen. We're glad for the, for the new hirers that they're part of the Salamaca family. Item nine is our board information and reports. Our upcoming events. We're off on Indigenous Day, and our next Indigenous education meeting is going to be the fourteenth at four PM. Next Board of Education meeting will be October twentieth. And we need a motion to go into executive session. Motion by Carrie. Second by Sue. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thumbs up by Meg. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. Thank you, everybody who's attending. We really appreciate it.